Wednesday, January 18, 2023. All meetings are last in spring on the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. The clerk, please call the law.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
There.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Reverend Burgess Protam.
Here.
Seven members present.
As we rejoin from our remote locations and in chambers, please rise and join with me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation. You know what? I can't remember the pledge. Someone has to take it over for me. Thank you. I was getting ready to break out in prayer. Wow. Okay. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
For the vote.
All those in favor who consented by a vote say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The next order of business is proclamation. We have two to be presented, first by Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson is going to be read into the record.
All right. How about Councilman Kraus?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Welcome. Off to a little bit of a rocky start, but I think we'll get it here. Come up here with me, please, okay? We are presenting this proclamation to increase awareness of human trafficking and the cancer that it has become on this nation and the world as we know it. So I'll begin with that, and I believe you'd like to make some remarks, so I'd be happy to entertain those. Whereas the United States Department of State defines human trafficking as a crime by where traffickers exploit and profit at the expense of adults or children by compelling them to perform labor or engage in commercial sex. And whereas although victims of human trafficking can be anyone, human traffickers commonly prey upon runaway and homeless youth, unaccompanied children, persons who do not have lawful immigration status within the United States, Black people and other people of color, indigenous peoples of North America, LGBTQIA+ individuals, migrant workers, persons with disabilities, and individuals with substance use disorder. And whereas it is a myth that perpetuates, perpetrators of human trafficking target victims that they do not know when in reality many survivors have been trafficked by romantic partners, family members, and employers. And whereas trafficking situations can be found in legal and illegal industries across the United States, including but not limited to agriculture, domestic service, hospitality, health and beauty services, the food service industry, and the sex and entertainment industry. And whereas this diverse and complex crime is often described as hidden in plain sight because victims may look normal and even interact with the community. And whereas while it is not possible to know just how many victims of human trafficking exist in the United States, the number is estimated between 100 and 300,000. And whereas research has shown that sex trafficking is a major issue facing some of the most vulnerable residents right here in Western Pennsylvania due to its dense nexus of interstates and highways, its tourism, and its epidemic of opiate addiction. And whereas the National Human Trafficking Hotline has received 6,588 contacts representing 1,705 cases and 3,646 victims since 2007. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh thanks the organizations in our city who worked tirelessly to support, to provide support for survivors of human trafficking by providing shelter, medical and mental health care, legal assistance, and other critical assistance. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh thanks federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies for working to free victims of trafficking. And whereas there are several ways in which an individual can help fight human trafficking, including educating themselves and others, volunteering with local organizations, and reporting suspicions of human trafficking to the Human Trafficking Hotline or to law enforcement. So now therefore be it resolved that human trafficking is a crime against humanity that impacts hundreds of thousands of people from all backgrounds across these United States, including Pittsburgh, and be it even further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 2023 to be National Human Trafficking Awareness Month here in the city of Pittsburgh. May I have a motion to approve?
Some moves.
All those in favor who consented by a vote say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Aye. Motion passes.
Is there someone you have guests?
I'm sorry?
You have guests there?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
Hello. My name is Teresa Gold, and I am the Executive Director for Refuge for Women. So Refuge for Women is a national faith-based organization that has 11 homes in five states that houses women who have come out of the sex industry. Since 2009, we have worked with over 400 women from 23 states who have come through our program. And by this, with our program, we have started working with the national, the task force here in Pittsburgh, I'm sorry, not national, but locally, with FBI, the United States District Attorney, the City of Pittsburgh, and other organizations like Homeland Security. And their greatest need is to have an emergency house where they can take survivors that they have encountered on some of their operations. And through that, we are opening a home here in the city. As some examples of what it looks like here, we mentioned the different national examples, but Polish Hill recently in the summer has identified 31 women from one trafficker here in the city. We have also worked with other organizations who we are identifying, some of the city's schools. There are students in the high schools who are getting groomed by traffickers. There is local college campuses where recruiters are going on campus to recruit women into this industry. We have middle school students who are being given a sex challenge on social media to post pictures of themselves over seven days. So these are examples of things that are happening here in the city. And so with our emergency home, we are working with other organizations that are already doing great work to provide resources for these women through family links, PAR, the Women's Center and Shelter, Light of Life. But the one thing that is missing is that residential emergency home to get the women off the streets and start beginning services, trauma-focused, evidence-based, detox services for them to be able to start to live a life full of dignity and hope again. And so through that, we are opening the home, like I said, here in the city. Within a few months, we have a 1.6 million operating budget, but that is because every service that we provide is completely free of charge to those women, so they do not have to worry about how are they going to meet the next bill. We do everything for them. We provide counseling, medical care, staff to be there through the nights to help them during those times of nightmares and night terrors. So we want to thank you for helping us bring awareness to this issue within the city, within the area, and to be able to provide these resources to the women in our community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? I want to say something.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to say something if possible.
Please.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I just, is that you, Teresa?
Yes, yes.
Good. I just wanted to say that, as we know, trafficking disproportionately affects brown and Black women, women of color. I think some of you may have remembered that my niece was kidnapped for a minute. You know, we're blessed that, you know, she was able to come home, but unfortunately, the media does not do a good job of really advertising and, you know, making the importance of women of color most of their situations, but especially in terms of their being kidnapped and trafficked, you know? When, you know, someone from a majority culture, if they go missing for a while, you know, it becomes major story and national news, but almost, you know, not almost, every day young Black women of color go missing, and there are no, there's no, you know, national outcry, no signs, no real national movement. And so congratulations on the proclamation. This is, this is one of the great, 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 great tragedies of our nation. And I want to thank Mr. Kraus for bringing this forward and knowing that this is extraordinarily important topic that he and I both are very passionate about.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Any other members? I just want to thank you, Councilman Kraus, for bringing this to our attention, and thank you very much for your work. My cousin is Olivia Kell, who is still missing, so after 10 years. So thank you for your work. Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Could you open your mouth? After a second.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess, for filling in.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we have another proc to be presented.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we don't? Okay. Do we have one to be read into the record?
I think for you, Madam President.
Okay. We have two to be read into the record now. Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please read the procs into the record? We have two to be read into the record.
Councilmember Wilson presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Friday, January 20, 2023, to be the Honorable Chief Justice Deborah McCloskey Todd Day here in our city of Pittsburgh. And Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 14 and 15, 2023, to be Shun Yuen Days in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You're a lifesaver.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Procs are approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilman. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council; threats and profanity will not be permitted. We have the first speaker, please. And the first speaker I have registered is Naomi Mullen. Naomi joins us via Zoom. Naomi Mullen.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air.
Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
I live in Bon Air. The Bon Air Elementary School building once was a shining example of what a city's public school should be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. The residents at the time of the construction did not want or approve of anything but a school to exist there. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say, take it down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid government. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. He was a compassionate father, husband, brother, relative, friend, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Pennsylvania was one of the 13 colonies that stood against the tyranny of England. They did not think that the people were childlike mentalities that could not make their own choices. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary Building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of defecation in the hallways and criminal acts in and around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of this school except as a green space. Join our supporters, Mayor Ganey, Councilman Cog.
Is she done? Mr. Tomixler? Thank you, Naomi. And our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Bilt Hoover. Jakarta, Indonesia. Vote by voter verification and sex-gender equality are core to what I do. Global Intelligence Society U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Founder, 2012, the City of Pittsburgh Sex Gender Identity Investigation Committee. Check the public record. Concern of Council and Ganey is pro-equity. Transfer sex establishment dollars to sufferers identified via inscription. Concern of GIS and RLM is anti-equity, pro-equality in existence, inequality due to achievement and competition. Equitarians, in my view, are anti-achievement-based inequality. Equalitarians, which I consider myself to be, are pro. Which is why I wrote Sex Gender Identity Formation, 16 male, 16 female-based formations, 2015, 2023. The SGIF uses three primary gender variables over female XX and male XY genetic sex. Examples, one womanish-manish face variable sets, 20 subsets. So an example is womanish over F or M equals WF or WM. Two, she-he hair clothing variable sets, 20 subsets. So she over F or M, WSF or WSM. And three, girl-boy mama-papa soma variable sets, minimum of 40 subsets. So WSGF or WSGM equals a function of XY, sigma equals sigma WSG, and a function XY equals sigma WSG subscript IE. Does the Male and Female Taxpayer Funded Sex Gender Equity Commission assist people who endure sexual harassment? I worked as a secretary for Gloria Steinem-esque boss. She liked me too much. She texted me many texts. I've kept those texts. I consulted a downtown law firm who said I had a case for sex-gender harassment but would likely lose. And the reason that they gave was that what non-gay male would refuse a blonde brilliant Barbie, which he was? Will the GEC support me in my case?
Our next speaker is John Hanrahan. Am I saying that correctly? Is he online?
Good morning. Hello? Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes.
Good morning. Yes, hi. John Hanrahan from Pineview. I am here to speak in opposition to Resolution 1139. And to unequivocally reject the proposal to resurrect a policy that has failed almost everywhere it has been tried. I can't tell you how disappointed I am actually to be here fending off this ridiculous proposal. I'd much rather be here thanking you for a program that works, a summer jobs program or a blitz to install new doors and windows on vacant and abandoned homes, both of which, just as two examples, are demonstrated effective tools for reducing violence and saving lives. But step one, and it's a step you can take today, drop the proposal for a curfew. Oppose Resolution 1139. Thanks.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ikohana Hal Makina. Ikohana Hal Makina? She's not on today? She's not in the audience? Just one more time, Ikohana Hal Makina? That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Now move on to, is there any, anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? If so, please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Good morning. Good morning. Can we get, pull the mic over? Turn the mic over? Chris, please help. Thank you. Good morning. We'll start over.
Councilwoman Kelsmith. Hi. Kelsmith, I apologize. Did you say your neighborhood for the record? Yes. My name is Janet Evans.
And the neighborhood?
Oh, Glen Hazel.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've known me for a long time.
Thank you.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for speaking today. Next speaker, please. Is there any other speakers? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill District. I had planned to speak on something else, but first I wanted to say I see where they gave a proclamation to Judge Todd. I came before with my daughter, and I can remember her asking my daughter, well, Unique, well, what is the problem? She got to saying, my mother and my aunt, and so she stopped her right then, and she said, wait a minute, Unique, I am a judge, but I must listen to what people, what they say. I must follow the rules. And that's what I think that Todd should come in here and tell everyone of you, because you don't follow the rules. What I'm, what I'm questioning, and they, people are trying to tell me something's wrong with me. I'm questioning, you say every Tuesday at 10 o'clock, you're supposed to have these meetings. Okay, so then we get, well, Tuesday comes, and you did it on Wednesday. I want to know why? Because you just want an extra day? If your book says that you're supposed to be here on Tuesday, why not Tuesday? You make it Wednesday, and we got to come twice in one day. I'm upset because all of you that sit home, you're in your luxuries sitting home, we're sitting, and they're talking amongst themselves, these council people. And my daughter told me, Mommy, don't get upset. Don't shake your head, because she didn't put a whole bunch of hair in my head, and it's really shaking. I want you to understand that if you make the rules, and for your lawyer, I did like him. I don't care for him now, because when I say, explain to me how come they can come on Wednesday and they're supposed to come Tuesday? I said, you as a lawyer, you're supposed to say point of order or say something. You're talking about, I'm their lawyer. Do you see what I'm saying? He's your lawyer, and he's not stopping you. I can't do it, but he can. And if he's not doing his job, then he should be sued. And I'm serious. Listen, let me tell you something. I've worked with some lawyers, and I watched them fight for the poor people. I'm talking about these, some of them lawyers, their parents were rich, but they fought for us, poor people. And you're here making rules, and I can't fight for myself? You taking my money? You understand, I am your boss. I am. It seems like you don't understand it. You try to make me like I'm the heavy. You are, when you break your rules, I'm questioning you. Why can't I question you? Why can't I? And why can't you answer me? You answer if the white people come. My councilman tells me it's against the law for him to answer me if I'm standing here or back here. But you white people run back and talk while I'm talking, and none of you go to jail. I think everyone that come back here when I'm talking should go to jail, and I mean it. Do you understand what the Constitution means to me? I was taught as a child, I am 76 years old. I was taught that this is our country. We should do our civil duty, and that's what I call myself doing, doing my civil duty, let you know you wrong and straighten up.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council in the audience? Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman, well, Councilman Burgess is online. Thank you. Councilman Burgess? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Coghill, too.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1124, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania for administrative services related to the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000. And Bill 1125, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the shared operation and administration of the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Your new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1126, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Proposed Land Development Located at 939 West North Avenue at Parcel Numbers 22 S.126 and 22 S.113.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Know the new papers.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1127, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Robert Gilbert and His Attorneys' Law Offices of Joel Sansone in the Amount of $10,000 in Settlement of Litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 1128, Resolution Designating Banks and Lending Institutions to Act as Depositories for the year 2023 in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article III Depositories. And Bill 1129, Resolution Providing for a Thank you. Councilman Burgess? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Coghill, too.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1124, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania for administrative services related to the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000. And Bill 1125, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the shared operation and administration of the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1126, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the proposed land development located at 939 West North Avenue at partial numbers 22 S. 126 and 22 S. 113.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
No new papers.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1127, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Robert Gilbert and his attorney's law offices of Joel Sansone in the amount of $10,000 in settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 1128, Resolution Designating Banks and Lending Institutions to Act as Depositories for the year 2023 in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article III Depositories. And Bill 1129, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements or Existing Agreements for Consulting Services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You're about to get busy. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset, sorry, Asset Management and Technology. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1130, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Mon Oakland Connector four-mile run by $1,400,000 and increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1 million and play area improvements by $400,000."
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings. I have several papers. I have one communication. Let's take that first, please.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1138, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Extended Acting Pay Request on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Katherine Grober per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Thank you. Have a motion to read, receive, and file?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Communicates approved. And now we have seven appointments. And Madam Clerk, let's take all the appointments together, please.
Bill Number 1131, Resolution Appointing Ariam Ford as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1132, Resolution Appointing Lisa Carver as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill Number 1133, Resolution Appointing Megan Ziegler as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill Number 1134, Resolution Appointing Celeste Smith as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill Number 1135, Resolution Appointing Christine Bethia as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1136, Resolution Appointing Mikael Awana as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. And Bill 1137, Resolution Appointing Tom Mossler as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor.
Madam President.
Councilman Kraus.
Thank you. I would like to motion to hold for interview with just brief discussion, if I could.
Please.
So, I had the opportunity to discuss with the mayor his approach to sort of redesigning what was formerly known as our commission. And I think it's a really interesting and innovative approach to sort of expand the capacity and the talent in perhaps ways that we might not have tapped it before. So I think it would be really interesting to bring the appointees in and to sort of talk, you know, flesh out a little bit more what the the charge will be of this newly formed commission. So with that, I will formally motion to interview the seven candidates.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We will hold for interviews, and we may even consider, since there's so many interviewing them later in the afternoon or evening.
Sure.
So that we can get through all of them. Or in two separate times.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for making the motion. And my ordinance, please, Madam Clerk.
Bill Number 1139, Ordinance Amending Pittsburgh City Code Chapter 604, Curfew, Section 604.09, Review.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we'll move on to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to reports of committee for final action. And we'll begin with Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Councilman Lavelle?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1120, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for January 11, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1100, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incurring of Non-Electoral Debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds of the City of Pittsburgh in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $67,680,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Madam?
Madam, or Mr.?
Take Councilwoman Gross first.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to reiterate some of my comments from last week, that we had a briefing on the bond issuance, and it's really important to keep in front of us that we really are favorable compared to cities that are similar size and have similar amounts of revenue. And that's kind of hard for us to believe, because we've been so, you know, spent so many years in a precarious financial situation. And that also, these bond items are directly funding the capital budget program that we just approved in December. And it's really important for, I want constituents to understand that. I feel like I am fairly conservative when it comes to borrowing for the city. And yet, we really have to weigh the costs and benefits of also then letting letting our public assets disintegrate, which they really are doing after being neglected for so many years when we couldn't borrow. So, I'm, you know, supportive today. I said the same things last week. In fact, Madam Clerk, would you mind bringing my comments forward into today's record from last week? I appreciate that. Because it's, we have to reinvest and rebuild in the city so that we don't have, lose our public assets. So it's really a balancing act, and I really appreciate everyone on council and the administration of taking a deliberative path to rebuilding and securing those assets like playgrounds, like pools, like public buildings that we know our communities are asking us for. So, I just wanted to make sure I said that again today, because it's important that we are cautious with our financial borrowing. You know, it's equally important that we invest in our public assets. So, that's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, to take the Councilwoman's remarks, just even one step further. I remember having a conversation with former DOMI Director Karina Ricks as she was leaving. And she shared with me that one of her disappointments in the time that she had served here was what she saw as disintegration of public assets that with just minor care could have been prevented. You know, great, she, her exact words were, "What we could have saved simply by putting a coat of paint on something" that then deteriorated, you know, into, you know, unbelievably costly repairs. And so, you know, and so I'm in agreement with the Councilwoman and the remarks that she makes and the importance of, there are times when it is appropriate to go into debt to make certain that we are being responsible and managing, really, the public's assets. They own them, right? But what I'd really like to do is sort of take your comments a step further, Madam President, from the, from the Standing Committee meeting. You know, we stand on the shoulders of those that go before us. And they build foundations that assist us in doing the work that we do. And I really do want to recognize then-Councilman Paduto and then-Mayor Paduto in his mentorship of me and I think many people on the council to truly understand the fiscal status of the city. You know, and how dire it was and how important it was to get our fiscal house in order. And many of us who have been here the length of time know the kinds of sacrifices that we had to make to get our house in order. And they were, they were terrible. You know, Doug Shields used to say, "Nobody suffered more than the kids under 47 in programming and playgrounds and things that we had to take away," and all those, those kinds of things. But by doing so, and, 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 you know, being the fiscal response, fiscally responsible agents that we're called to be, we were able, under his leadership, to get our financial house in order. And, which is what gives us the kind of bond rating that we have today and the collateral, if you will, to go out and be able to borrow the monies to do the kinds of things we do. And we all heard from our advisors how sound we are fiscally and how and why that helps us to do the things that we need to do. And, you know, and when you, when you brought that forward, I thought, you know, that really needs to be stated soundly. That, you know, we do stand on the shoulders of those that have come before us. And I learned a lot from him. As a mentor on council, I learned a lot from him when he had the stewardship of the mayor's office. And I just didn't want that to go unsaid, that, that I appreciate what he did to help me to understand how important it was to be fiscally responsible. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? I'm just going to add to that, that I definitely want to thank and acknowledge the work of the people before us. And, you know, since I've been here, we've had mayors and their chiefs of staffs and their budget people who have helped us a lot. Scott Conca, you know, Bill Rubini, Kevin Paulus. We've had a lot of people here doing a lot of things, helping us and guiding us over the years. But I'll never forget, Joe King came up to me one day, and he said, "Follow Paduto. He's the smartest guy here. He knows what he's talking about." And I thought, "You've got another thing coming." Because at the time, he and I did not get along. And so, I learned over the years that he actually knew a lot about the finances and Dan Gilman and Kevin Ackland. I mean, they're all doing amazing things now, but at the time, you know, I didn't realize. And I learned over time how much they do know and how much they, we could have benefited from hearing from them. But I also am really grateful that the current administration kept some of the same people. People that we trust and people that we know, know the budget and know what they're doing. So I want to thank them for their work, you know, so I'm looking forward to working more. I'm grateful that they're open to discussing a lot of things with us. But I really want to thank, thank everyone involved with the budget. It's not an easy process and with this bond. So, with that said, if there's no further discussion?
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I think it's important to recognize our colleagues in that-
Yes, absolutely.
It was, it was, you know, we, you know, not only did we get our financial house in order, but we codified a lot of the steps that we took to ensure that future councils, future administrations, future generations followed on a path of sound fiscal policy. And that would not have happened without our colleagues here stepping up at very difficult times and making very difficult decisions, but agreeing that, you know, the foundation of everything good comes from our financial house being in order. And so I just want to recognize our colleagues-
I'm glad you did that, because so thank you, councilmembers and previous councilmembers who contributed to all this financial security. But I also want to say, the first thing that happened when our budget came up, where the bond came up, I looked at our budget director, Peter McDevitt, and I looked at Rhea Price, who's our deputy. And they, I said, "Are you okay with this?" They both said yes. Then I looked at Deanne Friesen. I said, "Are you okay with this?" And everyone said, "Yes, they think it's, you know, makes sense. It's good." They looked into everything. So I want to thank them for their sound advice as well. With that said, is there anything else from members? With that, now the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to our next committee of the day, which I threw over here, is Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1122, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 11, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1101, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program year 2016 and authorize subsequent agreements." Bill 1102, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program in year 2017 and authorize subsequent agreements." Bill 1103, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2018 and authorize subsequent agreements." Bill 1104, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program in year 2019 and authorize subsequent agreements." Bill 1105, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2020 and authorize subsequent agreements." And Bill 1106, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2021 and authorize subsequent agreements."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to, we have one more committee. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Got used to that title.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1123, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January 11, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 795, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from White Hawks Social Club to applicant The Village Social Club Plus Incorporated for the premises located at 48 Greenway Drive, known as The Village Social Club Plus pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill Number 10- Village Social Club Plus pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill Number 1099, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Thirty-One Oh Seven to Thirty-One Eleven Brereton Street.
Thank you. You've heard the reading on the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, I just want to thank again, uh, Councilman Kraus.
Allison.
Allison.
Harndon.
Harndon and, um, our solicitor, Dan Friesen, for their work on the, uh, liquor license application for De Village and putting in the, um, the conditional use agreement. So thank you.
May I say something?
And I want to thank them for working with us in the community.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President.
Want to say something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let members know, I did have the opportunity to have an extensive conversation with Allison about the state of liquor law in the, uh, in, in state of, or the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, and, uh, she has some very interesting perspectives in how we can conduct the, uh, post-agenda and who we should be asking to attend, uh, to, to like really drill deep in, uh, in the state of alcohol licensing in Pennsylvania, which is very complex and convoluted. But I just wanted to show members, we'll proceed with that.
Thank you. And I also want to acknowledge Councilwoman Gross because she not only worked with us on the bill, she said, um, she did some of the first, um, applications this way. So I want to thank you for your work as well and for helping us through this. Uh, with that said, is there any further discussion? Uh, okay. Uh, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs., Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon, we, council will hold our standing committees meeting at one thirty PM. Speaker registration will close at twelve thirty PM. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committees' meetings on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, at ten AM respectively. Speaker registration will close at nine AM the day of the meeting. To register to speak at one of these meetings or, and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk at, at the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Um, is there anything from members? So I'm going to just first make a few comments about the curfew legislation. I want to first apologize to my colleagues because I didn't even have a chance to talk to most of you, um, prior to introducing, prior to you hearing it from the media. So I want to apologize for that first. I want to thank the public for their comments and for their concerns and the mayor's office for their willingness to work with us on putting forward something that's, um, more beneficial to our residents. I want to be very clear. Other cities are doing this. Cities that want to stop young people from being shot on the streets. People that want to stop residents, innocent bystanders, young children from being shot on the streets. They're doing it in DC. They're doing it in Chicago. Two black female mayors put those in place. They're doing it in Philly. They're doing it in Erie. They're doing it in Wilkes-Barre, PA. They're doing it in, in McKees Rocks, uh, which borders my district. They're doing it in very many, 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 many different places. And some places are having success. Some are punitive. They're sending kids to a place like a Schuman. We have never proposed, one, that we would send kids to Schuman. We've proposed that we send them for help and get kids on, to a track where they and their families can receive help twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We also did not propose the current legislation. What we said is, look, look at that legislation. Let's, all that our legislation did was say, let's have a conversation. And it blew up into, we want the police and young kids on the street having negative interactions, assuming that would happen. But I will say, every day in this region, somebody is being shot. You either want to help kids or you want to play politics. But I can't see both happening. At this point, I think our families are fed up. They want to see us act. They want to see us worry about their kids as much as they worry about their kids. As one kid said to me, you don't have to walk down the street looking over your back and wondering if you're going to be shot. And no one, none of us, most of us do not. So, and some of us do. And some of us have had people that we loved who have been shot. But I think we're in a place where this city is really, really getting to a point where our families are so blended. All of us are affected by some of the things that are happening in these, in the communities. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of resources that are actually working. We have a lot of resources, millions of dollars going in to stop kids from being shot, millions of dollars to keep our people safe in the city of Pittsburgh. And yet, we've had one of the most violent years we've ever had. So I'm just going to say, I want us to keep our minds open. I want to put us, the kids first, to put your politics aside. And let's focus on how we can keep kids safe. And at any point, I want to also say, we have, we are going to form a committee on looking at the current curfew, amending the current curfew, or whether or not we should even have a curfew, and whether or not we should have a facility or several facilities where we can send kids. This is a conversation. And if we can't even have a conversation without, you know, the barrage of accusations and, and comments, then our kids are in more trouble than the person sitting next to them on the street. We're an enemy of them as well. We better have a conversation about what's happening with our kids. And they depend on us. And it's time for us to act like the adults in the room. That said, I want to thank my colleagues for all the support and all the comments that they've been giving us over the time. Many of you really care tremendously about what happens to kids. And I, and I do appreciate it. And I did have a conversation with the mayor's office, and they also care. We just may see different ways of getting there, but we all want to get there. We all want to keep our kids safe. So let's get to that place. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam President. Well said.
Thank you.
First of all, and I want to thank you for our conversation we had last night surrounding this bill of yours. Any negative reactions to it from the public? Uh, you know, I, I want to say, they clearly don't understand the intent and the purpose, okay? Um, you know, I know you're doing this out of compassion. I happen to think that done right, this could be a very good thing. I think it's a good way to use, whether it's Stop the Violence funds or other buckets of money in order to almost create welcoming centers, as the way I like to think of them as. And just giving kids an opportunity somewhere else to be, um, you know, whether it's problems at home or issues they have in their life that we can't control, but to have somewhere for them to go. So again, I think the public, you know, you know, views it one way. When they hear curfew, they, you know, their, their impression is, you know, our police are going to be dragging fifteen-year-old kids off the street. And I know that's farthest thing from the truth and that farthest thing from your intent. And, um, I support it. I would like to be a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Sure. And I look forward to continuing the conversation and seeing what that might look like.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Anything else from other members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
So, first of all, I always applaud your willingness to have the conversation. You have facilitated a variety of stakeholders who normally will not talk together over a variety of issues over your career. This is something that you do, perhaps better than any other member of council. Um, I will, my part of this, and I will say this publicly, um, I agree with you a thousand percent about having resource centers that are open, extended hours, perhaps even twenty-four hours, that these kids can engage with. And I will, uh, we may have to, you know, pilot one, but I will pledge today with everything within my power, um, to work with you to create such a resource center. I have, you know, done some similar things in my past career. So I, um, I will spend all of my energy on that part of this, of creating us a place under your, uh, you know, from your, you've been saying this for years, and I think you're right. We should create a place, um, specifically designed, um, to help, um, help these kids and their families and, um, you know, start off crops, crops with one and have several regionally in the city. And so I will put my energy into that part of this conversation.
Thank you, Reverend. Anything else from members? Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I just wanted, so, so first of all, I, I do want to, um, echo Councilman Coghill. Madam President, you and I spoke, and, um, I, I fully understand your intention and how, how concerned you are about our youth, as we all are. Uh, I do want to say, uh, though, for, for those out there who, whose eyes sort of popped open at the idea of starting to enforce the existing curfew rules, they too also, they too have the, 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 you know, our youth in mind, right? They care very deeply about the, the state of violence in our city, et cetera, for our youth. So I, I do want to just sort of say that for them as well. And I, I know that you know that, but, but when we say politicizing, that sort of implies that we're using it as a tool or leverage. But at any rate, um, so we all have, we all have the benefit of our, of our kids in mind. And I also, just because we are talking about it and we are talking about, um, this, this ordinance from nineteen ninety-five, I think it's important that we actually look at what it says. Um, and I'd like to thank, um, Brooke, um, Brooke Christie on my staff. She puts together this fabulous packet for me, you know. Um, so, you know, I have, but, you know, in this ordinance, it talks about bringing, you know, a record of, you know, maintaining a record for youths that violate the curfew. So that's bringing young kids, just, just for being out past curfew, into the criminal justice system, right? So number one. And I, and I understand that you're saying we were looking, but I just wanted, for the record, to, so, so that we can all understand why people are so upset about this, right? And, um, three-hundred-dollar fines, um, or being imprisoned for not more than thirty days. You know, these are kids we're talking about. And, you know, kids, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Um, and these are things that, you know, that can ruin families' lives, as, as so much of the nineties-era criminal, criminal justice reform did. So I just want to, just want to underscore that and, um, also why I really, any form of, and, and there's also ample evidence about why curfews don't work. So I, I did want to just bring that to the table so that everyone, so that, you know, when we do all work together, that, that, that we're keeping this history in mind.
Thank you. And, uh, just to clarify, to please read the ordinance again, because the actual curfew says it's for operators operating places with kids in their establishments after curfew hours will be, have, um, face criminal. It doesn't say that-
It says a minor shall not remain in a public place or on the premises of an establishment from, and then-
Right. So the establishment, the fine will go to the establishment.
Well, right, but also in a-
Well, I'm talking to our solicitor. Do you know better than he does? Do you want to talk to him?
At any rate.
Okay. So I would just say, I just want to say very clearly that we also never, we are not, we are not suggesting that the police are the ones that should enforce it. We don't know. We don't know if outreach workers could be used. We don't know if the people receiving Stop the Violence Fund should be used. We don't know if, um, the people that have centers that have, you know, that are receiving dollars need additional help, and maybe we can work with them to get centers open. We don't know the reality. I think that's why we want to have a conversation. That's why we introduced the legislation. And when I say not to politicize it, it's because some of the people that criticized and said that we were going to, um, criminalize kids for walking on the street, actually said to me, one of the things they want to do is to reopen Schuman Center, but have the county operate it instead of a private company. If anything's going to criminalize kids, it's putting them in Schuman Center and giving them a record. We're trying to avoid that. We're trying to give them a hope, not a record. So with that said, I just want to be very clear. There's a lot of accusations, a lot of misinformation going around. So I'll make sure it's very clear when we come public. But we'll form a committee that can really work on this and people who will. And we're working with the mayor's office on what we, who we should be at that table and what we can do. And when we compare, we're not going to compare whether a curfew worked in a city that didn't offer a resource. We're going to compare it to a center, a city that offered a resource and a hope versus a Schuman Center or some kind of criminal, um, facility. Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Um, and thank you for so elegantly laying out your vision for this, um, to us right now and-
All about elegant.
Clarifying for, my thoughts are clarifying for the purposes of the public and the media as well. Um, I wanted, I will be conducting my own research and trying to find as much as I can, but I did want to find, put out a call to anyone who might have, um, a strong, um, a strong feeling about this bill, one way or the other, and data to back it up, to send it over to us, send it over to me. I'm, I want to read up before, before we actually discuss this in detail next week, um, what the lessons are from other cities, whether or not, as you suggest, you know, they are taking a punitive approach with detention centers or with us, us a, uh, more rehabilitative approach with, um, you know, without using police and with, if that's possible, without using police and without a detention center, but actually a, a drop-in center, which my hope would be that in time, um, a curfew wouldn't be needed because the drop-in center would be so popular that they would just go there automatically and voluntarily, um, if necessary. But, um, and I know that's your intention too, uh, to not to make this permanent. But, um, any, any data that anyone has, lessons learned from other cities, I think would be really valuable for all of us to, um, review before next week in the discussion. And so if anyone has that, please send it my way, our way.
And just so you know, we're going to hold next week, um, until we form the committee and work with the administration on, you know, how we should, how we should put this together. But I want to be really clear. We just, we just want to keep kids alive. We're not saying that we have to have a curfew. We're not saying that we have to have a center. We're saying, how can we do something immediately as we're waiting for some of the Stop the Violence programs and other funding to take effect and really make some change, long-term change. Short-term, we need some immediate solutions. Summer's coming, and we know that crime usually escalates around that time. Or we at least perceive it to be escalating because we see more of it. So I, I think that we want to make sure that before we get into the warmer months, that we are keeping our kids, we have some plan to keep our kids safe and our residents safe as well. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I do also just want, I would, I would encourage everyone on council. I know currently, I'm just, I, I don't know all of the programs that are working, for example, in, in, in my district. Um, I do know of the REACH program. Um, I'm in touch with them. I would encourage all council members to find out exactly who is doing work in your district. Get in touch with them, you know, talk about what they're doing. And, you know, in addition to this committee, but really, you know, let, let's also be talking to the people who have been tasked, right, through Stop the Violence to do this work on the ground. And, um, and, you know, bring our ideas to the table, bring community members that they might not be in touch with to the table so that, so that we're all, you know, in your specific district, working on solutions that will work for your residents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I, um, Teresa.
Sorry, yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work with this part of it, but I don't want us to lose track of why we are here. We're here because we've had a pandemic that has taken kids out of school, out of programming, and has created probably one of the largest psychological and educational crisis, certainly in our lifetime, maybe arguably in the history of our country. This problem we're facing is a nationwide problem because the, the pandemic was global. And so what we're seeing in Pittsburgh is not this similar to what we're seeing in Baltimore. Not this similar to what we're seeing in Washington. The solutions, we already know what they are. It's investing in these families. It's providing them with jobs. It's providing them with social sources, so, social services. It's giving them fair housing. But when we look at our city, let's be honest, we are a segregated city. We have the vast majority of African-Americans living in third-world situations. We have not invested properly in housing. We have not, although we've done, this council has done more than almost anyone in the history of the city, but we've spent hundreds of years. We are segregated, right? We have, we have areas where Black families still cannot move in. That's not, that's not, that's not, that's not, you know, sugarcoat the amount of active overt racism that goes on in this city. And until we fix these social issues, until we have places where Black people and all people can work, make money, live in decent housing, and stop being, we are racist, we're a full bag, we discriminate against women, all that's happening in our city. And all these factors impact those kids. And so it's not the kids' fault. It's not the families' fault, although the kids have some responsibility and the families have some responsibility. It is a societal problem that's going to take all of us, every single, we need families to be focused and healthy. We need kids to be focused and healthy. We need government to be focused and healthy. And our priority is what we fund. And I, if, if anything, I've spent my time on council trying to put resources into those things that we care about. We've only fully funded these prevention efforts for the first time. The monies that are going out in Stop the Violence is the first time. And they are a fraction, pennies, to what we spend on policing. to what we spend on policing. Pennies of what we spend on enforcement, pennies of what we spend on incarceration. Remember, there are this, you know, six components of this work, prevention, intervention, policing, prosecution, incarceration, integration, right? We spend pennies on prevention, intervention, and incarceration. We spend millions of dollars on wars on crime, on incarceration, on the whole process. So, all these things that are societal are impacting these families that are mostly poor, mostly segregated, mostly single women with children, and we know what it is. And so, and, and I want to be real clear, it is not, we need comprehensive wraparound social service programming, we need more housing, better jobs, we know what the solutions are, they are expensive. And as soon as we start spending any money in the solution areas of prevention programs, intervention programs, and incarcerate, I mean, and reintegration program, when we start spending money, there are going to be these other people who say, oh, no, that's too much money for them. I remember when we did Shot Spire, and, you know, what I, Shot Spire now has been a lot of this, you know, maybe one of the more impactful, a gun, you know, gunshot reduction stuff. But believe it, there were council members who told me a million dollars was way too much money to spend on these programs. And, and so, you know, um, and, and the same thing is, we have the county who's responsible for social services, not the city. We've done more for social services, but it's really the county's, this responsibility. So, I'm very passionate about this, I think I understand it, I'm not, I'm not, well, I guess I am expert, but I, I know this stuff. It is not, it is not the programming that's the guy. The guy is concentrated resources. One of the areas I represent is Homewood. If you really want to stop the violence in Homewood, if you really want to change a lot of those people, you're going to have to spend about a half a billion to three-quarters of a billion dollars of rebuilding those communities. And that's really what's needed. And until we do that, until we actually come to grips with the fact that it is un-American, it's a shame that South Side Flats, Squirrel Hill, Queen Greaves, these wealthy communities have every amenity, every, all money, all these resources in places like Belso or Homewood, uh, Sheridan, um, Ligo Emmington have this drought of resources. Until we come, and that, and that's not driven by the choices that these families have made, it's those choices that this country has made because of overt racism and its profit people who are not black and brown and every day discriminates against women, minorities, gay and lesbian, trans people, until we be honest about that. And, and, and honestly, just proportionately, or resources into those communities, everything we do, although helpful, will still be Band-Aids because we're not fixing the real problem. If you want to see what works, go to Lomer and look at the Choice Neighborhood. That works. When you rebuild their housing and you provide them with amenities and you provide them with jobs, it is the single, probably, most significant event, at least that's what Dan Gillman says, that's what Paduna says, that we did together. That works. So, it's not just, you know, putting kids in centers, that not going to work, or even providing programs, that not going to work. We're going to have to do everything at once at scale, rebuild their communities at scale, give them jobs at scale, let them move into better neighborhoods at scale, give them stores, restaurants, and business opportunities at scale. That's the work, and that's what we're going to do, and that's, I've been advocating that, I'll continue to advocate for that. And so, all these pieces that we do have to be in concert with these bigger things that must be done. I'm sorry, I'm talking to them. This is, you know, this is the work I've given at least my time on council floor and probably the work I'll give the rest of my life.
Thank you.
Thank you for this diatribe, but that's what I said.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess, and I do want to say that I think that we shouldn't be pitting one of our neighborhoods against another. We are all in this together, and I think that's part of the problem. We need to realize that we need to spend money in all of our neighborhoods. I mean, a lot of them have been disinvested in, uh, over the years. And there's, I mean, we're talking about the infrastructure in a lot of the neighborhoods. Yes, there's a lot happening in, uh, neighborhoods of Keller that are not positive, and so we want to make sure that we are putting in dollars and doing those things to help lift up everyone in the city of Pittsburgh. But I think that's the conversation we have to have. How can we, with very different opinions, all work together, put our kids first, and come up with some real solutions, working with the administration and, um, and with the families involved in a lot of this stuff? So, with that said, um, I just want to make a mention that I've heard today that Councilman Kraus has made an announcement that he will not seek reelection, and I just want to tell Councilman Kraus, I don't know what it's going to be like without you here. I think, I tell people all the time, we have a lot of institutional knowledge here, and it's extremely important to know and understand what has come before us, as you mentioned, and to know and understand what you bring to the table. You have explained so much to me in this position and helped me so many times, late-night phone calls and just, you know, times I'm just like, I'm done, I've had it. You've really helped us through and lead this council, even though you're no longer present, you've been helping to lead in many, many ways, and I just, I don't know what we're going to do without the institutional knowledge, um, that you bring to the table. So, thank you very much. I think that this council and the city have benefited greatly from, from what you have brought to the table, and especially, I mean, now, this year, it seems like you know more than ever before. It's like, there's so much, and then now you're going to leave. So, I just want to thank you and for the work that you have done, uh, for us, from the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you. We'll do something to honor you, you know, later, but I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. Anything else from members? With that said, kind of a motion to adjourn the meeting, excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. There's no absent member, no.
No vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.